Okay, I'd like to call our City Council meeting to order. Let's all stand for the pledge and I'll Councilmember Garnica lead us in the pledge.
Do you write it over your heart? Ready, begin it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Irelia, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brogie. Mayor Proton Mendez.
Here.
Mayor Villasenor.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Garnica.
Okay, excellent. Our next is approval of the agenda. Can I get an approval? All right, I have a first.
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great, our next item is number five, presentations. And we'll have a presentation from the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, our homeless liaison unit. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm James Douglas, I'm sergeant with the sheriff's office and my partner Cameron Knox is here with me. So we're part of our newly formed homeless liaison unit. So I'm just gonna kind of go over the basics of who we are, what we are. And Cameron is your resident expert here in this city, he's worked it for a very long time. So he'll kind of talk about local issues and then we'll answer some questions as well.
Great.
So approximately a year ago, the Board of Supervisors approved a full-time homeless liaison unit. The sheriff's office had been supporting a part-time team, what we refer to as a collateral team to similar to our SWAT teams or our tactical response team. So units that with our department aren't necessarily needed full-time. We use collateral teams where people have full-time jobs and then they do these part-time jobs as needed. Well, probably about five, six years ago, we kind of saw a transition with people that were experiencing homelessness. Kind of a morphing in how people were living and experiencing homelessness. Specifically in our rural areas, riverbeds, really. Really, they became a significant hindrance and nuisance kind of in the area. Huge amounts of trash, debris, human waste, chemicals. So that's where the collateral team was formed and kind of became a part of. The county invested a lot of resources in trying to get help to these people to end their homelessness issues and at the same time have a balance between enforcement where we've offered resources but people aren't taking them and so we're still having issues with the environmental impact. That unit became so successful that the Board of Supervisors decided, hey, we want this to be a full-time unit. And that's been a nationwide trend as well. A lot of agencies are seeing that people experiencing homelessness, it's because of multifaceted issues. And so agencies, especially public entities, really want to fix the issue. They don't want to put a Band-Aid on it, they don't want to cover it up. They decided, hey, we need to fix this problem, these are members of society that have been forgotten. We want to try to help them out. So these full-time, would refer to sometimes as vulnerable population officers, we would call ourselves a homeless liaison unit. It's just law enforcement officers who know their areas, know where people live, and try to get resources to it. So our unit is made up of one captain, two sergeants, and eight deputies. Specifically why that makeup was is that the Board of Supervisors and our department wanted a seven-day-a-week coverage. So we follow our shift work right now to where there's a sergeant and four deputies working every day. Our captain is more of in an administrative position dealing with Board of Supervisors and meetings. So he works kind of a typical management-type schedule. But we work seven days a week, we work after-hours as needed as well. And really what our goal is, is it's service-first. We know where people are living, we have the time to put boots on the ground, figure out where our encampments are, and we can also provide security for agencies that necessarily don't feel comfortable going down into remote areas. The populations we're dealing with are generally pretty recluse and we're able to kind of bridge that gap and make everybody feel comfortable interacting with one another. The overall goal is to get people help, right? I've been a cop for 17 years, I come from a law enforcement family. One of the biggest things I've learned is that people are better off when they have a roof over their head. Really doesn't matter what the past was, doesn't matter what their present is, doesn't matter what their future is. You get a roof over someone's head, they're gonna do better in life. And that's really what I would say the ultimate goal is. We can describe that goal in many, many different ways and we have to because we have to learn how to get to that goal. But really, that's the most important goal. So other things that we do is speaking like this, we'll educate groups, you know, on people that are experiencing homelessness. Talk about the different laws that affect it. Again, just because someone's homeless doesn't mean they lose their civil rights. So, you know, we have a fine balance of making sure that people's civil rights are protected, that we don't violate those. Keep people's humanity and at the same time have boundaries of being able to respect the civil rights of citizens that do have homes, have businesses, work in agricultural areas. One of the most successful parts of our unit is what's referred to as backpack medicine. Backpack medicine was developed over 40 years ago on the East Coast. It was developed by literally just one doctor saying, hey, there's populations out there that don't want to come seek medical attention. I'm just gonna go right to them in the streets. It has since morphed into a very, very big program. So when we do backpack medicine, we bring people from homeless services, behavioral health, vaccine services, addiction services, and we bring ER doctors with us. We have a wide group of people, we'll bring veteran services as well. And we bring all these people in and they say, what do you need, how can I help you? They'll give people vaccines on the spot right there. They'll take blood so people can find out if they have communicable diseases. They'll issue people Narcan so they can help prevent overdoses. Veteran services will come and get people connected with housing. And then ER doctors are there and they'll just treat people right then and there, they'll do assessments on the spot. It's really very impressive, it's a cool program to be a part of. And so that's really the meat and potatoes of what we're doing. We get contacted by a lot of agencies that say, hey, we're looking for this person or we want to get these people help. And then we facilitate getting that help, connecting those two groups. And so again, we partner with all kinds of different agencies. We get different phone calls all throughout the day, all throughout the week. Hey, can you help us with this? And really, that's what it's all about is if someone calls for help, that's what we're there for. And just another avenue too is that we are trying to sort of take away some of the calls for service for patrol. Really, a patrol deputy should be in an emergency response call or an active crime call. A lot of the calls that we get about people that are experiencing homelessness are general public that have questions, that have issues. And so what we try to do, our dispatch center right now is that if it is not an emergent call or a crime in progress call, they'll make sure the reporting party's all right with it and they'll send us an email. And then we follow up with them because we're the best people to deal with the issue and educate the general public. And that's really, really helped a lot because taxpayers are paying for police officers to be in the street and respond to calls. When something bad happens right then and there, you want a black and white to be able to respond right then and there. And if they're dealing with these other issues because of homelessness, it takes away from kind of the balance of how we serve the public. So we're trying to sort of fill that gap and keep our cops on the street. Do you want to talk a little bit about just kind of what Fillmore deals with?
Yeah, so, um, thank you for having us. I worked Fillmore for about seven years, Fillmore Patrol. During that time, I also worked with the collateral position that he spoke of before it formed the full-time team. Here at the Fillmore station, I kind of took initiative on the homeless issues that were here and kind of kept tabs on everyone, tried to do my own sort of thing with getting them services and creating relationships with the local shelters, being in Santa Paula and Ventura. So here in Fillmore, you know, small town, I know that it's grown quite a bit but it still keeps that small-town charm that we all like. But with that, populations grow and our homeless population has also grown within the last few years. Reasons being people being evicted from their homes or substance abuse issues, all the issues that we went into prior. But for the most part, most of the homeless population in Fillmore resides in the Santa Clara River bottom underneath the A Street Bridge. That population changes on a weekly basis based on if people are being housed or out of town or most of them are locals and stay with family inside town. So that number changes weekly. Anyone have any questions on any of the issues in Fillmore or the population here?
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions? Comments? Okay, yes, John. Is your mic on?
I know previously, I think Chief had said that we had, that we were fortunate that our homeless population was not, the majority was not, I guess, transitory or they were not transient. That most of them were from Fillmore and had relatives here. Is that still the case from what you're?
Correct, yeah, that would absolutely be correct in my experience. Everyone was, for the most part, been local for their entire life or within the last 10 years, I would say. It's pretty rare to find someone that stays here that continues to be transient. Every now and then, there will be people passing through just because of the local highway. There's people going to LA and people going to Ventura, that just happens.
Thank you for your presentation. I think it's the work that you do is essential and I'm really glad to hear that it's a sort of a fully funded and staffed unit. It's really important. I do have a question on the housing and I think that's sort of maybe where the crux of everything is, right? That I'm glad to hear that the end goal is the housing for the homeless. But also, there's that, you know, with shelters and their requirements, right? And their criteria for staying there. So has there been, at least maybe as part of the homeless liaison unit, talk about how do we, you know, how do we get there really from those that they need the treatment, they need the drug treatment? There's just that unwillingness to maybe go there. Just wondering if there's been any inroads made, as you've seen around the county and in that?
Well, I would say that part of this approach is we do all these backpack medicines and we do it continuously. We come to Fillmore pretty regularly. And I think part of that approach where maybe they don't want help that day but maybe in two weeks or maybe the next time, they will want to accept services. That approach has, in my experience, worked, doesn't work all the time, but it's what we're doing and we'll keep trying.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, and just kind of to second what Cameron said. You should all feel very comfortable. The level of attentiveness that the deputies here in Fillmore show is very high. Captain, very impressed working with Cameron, he's a great partner and knows it. We actually are filling a position, an open position on our spot with a deputy from Fillmore just because he knows, he's done so much for the community. I don't know if you've seen the news story that was posted on our, the sheriff's Instagram and YouTube page. But there was a family that was experiencing homelessness in Steckel Park. Deputy Dave Mancini was driving through for kind of an unrelated issue, saw him, contacted him, ended up reaching out to us and through healthcare for the homeless and backpack medicine, they got temporary shelter and now they're living in this beautiful new veterans' housing on the east end of Ventura. That was all because a Fillmore deputy stopped and took time. And then other Fillmore, former Fillmore deputies in the homeless liaison unit took time to take it even further. So you have a very committed group of people out here and I would say across the page with the sheriff's office and even in the Board of Supervisors. I mean, we've had numerous Board of Supervisors members who have come out and walk with us. I've been shocked, the commitment to this unit and everybody that has their hand in it cares about it. So it's a big part and it's like Cameron says, we're just trying to capture someone at the right, I shouldn't say capture, that's a poor word usage. We're trying to capture that moment where someone's in the right state of mind and we develop that rapport and that's when they're gonna accept housing and that's kind of what we're all about.
That's great. And like you said, that takes, it takes that repetitive touch, right? Over and over again and building that trust to even be able to have that potential moment. So, thank you again, thank you so much for all the work that you do and continued success and you have, of course, the city of Fillmore support now.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, let's see here, our next agenda item is our public comments and we do have several. Alrighty, first up for, then this is general public comment, Gabe Candelario. And Gabe will have three minutes.
Cool. Hi, everyone, I'm Gabe Candelario, I work out at One Step Alaves and I'm the facilitator for the Youth Advisory Council. Our Youth Advisory Council is a program that's funded by Ventura County Probation Agency. And a couple of years ago, actually in 2022, I was approached by the head of probation and they were just like, hey, you have funding that you have not been using for your Youth Advisory Council. So I need you to pretty much use it, right? And I had little to no training and I started figuring out, like, okay, what am I gonna do? I learned quickly that a Youth Advisory Council that we have there is a support group that we use for any youth that have been impacted by the juvenile justice system or the system in general. So I, like I said, didn't know really much to do, so I started talking to the youth. Started asking them, hey, what's going on in your community, what are some changes that you would like to see and all of that? So as we were talking during one of our meetings, we started talking to them about what the problem was. And a lot of them said that they had negative impact on law enforcement, rightfully so. I mean, if a lot of them had been system-impacted, it makes sense that they did not have the best idea of law enforcement. So I started talking to them, what changes would they like to see? They said they would love to have a relationship with law enforcement. So I was like, okay, now I have my problem, I have, you know, somewhat of a solution. Now I gotta create what, something I can do to try to build these two things as. So I came up with an idea, we implemented it in 2022 and we called it Cones with Cops because teens all love ice cream and so does the community. So I figured that this would be the best way to try to have the relationship and introduce our teens to law enforcement and them experience each other in positive light. So I come to you all today to invite you all to, this is going to be our third year that we are doing it. We will be doing two more Cones with Cops events. We have one in Fillmore that will be taking place at the end of April and one in Oxnard. We are doing Oxnard because we also partner up with the Local Boys and Girls Club in Oxnard. So if you guys can all come out, we would greatly appreciate it to this event. And, you know, it's free to the community. Come out here, we're gonna have Mr. Softy out there, we're gonna be giving out ice cream. I mean, I think that they're awesome. So in front of you guys, you guys have a flyer, it's in English and in Spanish. And if you guys have any questions, you guys can give me a call and I hope to see you all there.
All right, thank you so much.
That was good timing.
It was succinct, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, our next general public comment speaker is, okay, Joe Whipple.
Councilmembers, good evening. My name is Joe Whipple, I am the new manager of Fillmore Senior Apartments over here across the street. And we have got a bit of a parking issue. So I wanted to talk to you guys about possibly opening up the nighttime parking in this parking lot that's two doors down, three doors down. It was closed to nighttime parking years ago, I'm gonna say six, seven, eight years ago. You might have a better memory of it, but there was a lot of drug activity, a lot of homeless activity living in the backyard. We had multiple residents in our facility that was, that were calling law enforcement. Law enforcement kept coming out, they finally got it cleaned up. The people that owned the house, or my understanding is that they owned the house, they donated, they got locked up, put away for a while and they donated the house to what I understand is a Christian-based, like a rescue-type home for mothers and their kids. So it's cleaned up nice, the neighborhood's looking a lot better. And I'd like to try to convince you guys to get this parking lot opened up for after-hours. And with the future road construction continuing to go on through here, I know that we're gonna have troubles with parking as some of this construction's going on. And a lot of our people might drive their car down to Vaughn's once a week and then it stays parked in, you know, on the street someplace. It would be nice if they could park or have the opportunity to park in that parking lot overnight without getting a ticket or, without getting towed. So if I could, I'd like to present this to you and get you guys to maybe talk about this and go from there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whipple. Okay, I think that's all I have for general public comment. Are there any other general public comments? Okay, all right, we'll move on now to City Council reports, recommendations, and comments. Do we have any to update? Oh, is there in the front row? I think you are here for an agendized item?
Yeah.
Okay, and I do have that down for nine, no, let's see here, for 8C. Okay, great. Okay. Any updates? Yes, Carrie?
Yeah, the last couple of weeks of Fillmore, I just feel like, and I keep hearing other councilmembers say the same thing, that for some reason, our schedules have exploded. We've all got committees to attend and subcommittees on the committees and that certainly has been the case with me. And so the last three weeks, my calendar's been filled with attending Ventura County Transportation Commission meetings and then a couple of subcommittees from that commission. One, which I thought Fillmore would be interested in, was a subcommittee meeting with regard to the Southern, or the railroad, the train. And just a quick update on what I learned there, we still don't see train activity here in Fillmore because the bridge, as you know, is still down, they're working on it. And now, the estimated completion date to have it up and running, which would then allow the trains back into this area as well, is scheduled to be completed in October now. They pushed it, it was August, now they've pushed it back to October. So there is, you know, light at the end of the tunnel on the whole train activity and it, I, we had the president of the train company at the meeting as well as the manager for, works out of Santa Paula. And so they were able to answer some questions as to what can we anticipate. There's a separate company called Mendocino that operates the touristy-type things that we've enjoyed in the past. Mendocino was not represented at that meeting. So there's still an unknown as to how much activity is going to be here in Fillmore with regard to, you know, Thomas the Tank Engine or, you know, some of the tourist train things. But I did ask that this representative from Mendocino attend the next meeting, so hopefully we'll get more information there. We also attended, along with other of my councilmembers, the League of California City Channel Division, which is the League of California Cities, for those of you who don't know, is a statewide organization which really are the support, they support the city councils, municipalities across the state. And then we have different smaller divisions. So we had an event in Golita two weeks ago, an evening event, and we were able to, you know, meet with other councils in that division, which is everything from San Luis Obispo, south to, I guess, Ventura County and anything beyond that. But anyway, so that was an important evening as well. So anyway, like I said, we've been busy and every time I turn around, we're, you know, putting other meetings on our calendars, but it's all been good, so.
All right, thank you. Any other updates? Okay, yes, Mayor.
Last week, I believe it was, I attended the Ventura Council of Governments meeting. It's usually Carrie that attends, but she was, had a prior commitment, so I filled in as an alternate. And we had a guest speaker from Caliguis Municipal Water District and they gave a good presentation about their role in wildfires and how the water plays a key role in their management of water and where the water comes from and the infrastructure. And I believe they passed out some slides, so if anybody would like to see them, either Carrie or myself have those slides and we could pass them on.
Okay, thank you. The others? Yep, okay, go ahead.
Excuse me. So like Councilmember Brogie said, I also attended the League of California Cities meeting up in Golita, so I'm not gonna rehash that. But one of the things that I attended was the, this is the Fillmore Pyru Basin's Groundwater Sustainability Group. And basically, the idea there is the state of California has mandated that in those areas where groundwater is used, that the agencies that use that water put together a plan to make sure that that water remains sustainable. So at the last meeting, we had really good news. The plan that the group put together for the Pyru and the two separate basins, the Pyru Basin and the Fillmore Basin, was accepted and I'm gonna read off what they said. They said, "The California Department of Water Resources found that they were, that the plans were complete and met the requirements of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act." So that was good news because there's a lot of work that goes into that by the staff of the United Water Conservation District. So that was a very, you know, I guess, really a milestone for the group. The other thing that came out of that meeting was that part of that plan was that the United Water Conservation District and the committee was proposing a Siena Gue Springs groundwater-dependent ecosystem for, during the drought. Basically, what this is, is we know that there are areas of the river, river down below here, the Santa Clara River, that there are actually trees that, and other large wildlife that live off of the water that's in the ground. And so what they were proposing was that they do a small experiment that during times of drought, we would use some of the water to keep those plants alive. So that was a huge discussion, there was a lot of back and forth because obviously, if we're taking water for this experiment, maybe it's not gonna be used for agriculture or maybe it's gonna be less used for the city. So anyway, there was a large discussion around that. Ultimately, we didn't make a decision yet on that proposal, but it is a point of discussion. Also, if you go out by, the location for it is out by the Fish Hatchery, just to the east of that is where they're proposing to put that experiment in. And what else? And I think, oh, one other thing, I attended the Rio Vista Track Grand Opening. So if you're not aware, Rio Vista opened a new track at the school. So there was attendance by the ASO, they had, the president of ASO was there for Fillmore as well as the Blazers, the track team that, you know, is for the youth. So they were all in attendance, it was very well, you know, received. And if you haven't been out to the track, it's a beautiful facility, so I would recommend going out there, so that's it for me.
I have a question. Is that track going to be used, the facilities used as after-hours, like they do the high school track? Do you know? Maybe it's for, Erica can answer that?
As far as I know, it is gonna be able to be used afterward because that's why the Blazers and the ASO. the Blazers and the AYSO are there, because there's a full-size soccer field in the middle of the track. So it's, you know, again, we're making improvements to the community, and to me, that was a great event to attend, and I highly recommend. If you haven't been out there to see the track, go out and check it out.
We'll have to work the details with the school district. Yeah.
All right, I do have, thank you, John, for your update. And also, just as a note, it is a big milestone for the Basin Groundwater Agency, because four years ago, I was sitting on it as part of being on City Council. We were in the thick of it, trying to work out the goals, objectives, the smart goals. So glad to see it was adopted. All right, I'll be brief too, but I do have, I've also, like everyone, busy with a few different meetings. Couple of interests to the community. Right after our last council meeting at the end of February, I attended the opening of the Lokahe Veterinary Technology Lab at the Ventura College East Campus, which is in Santa Paula. It's right there on Faulkner Road, the little frontage road by the old Kmart. And this is a brand-new, 2,000-square-foot teaching lab with live animals. So it was great. We, you know, elected officials from across the county and others in the community were invited. And, you know, it's one of, I think, there's only about 200 accredited programs for Vet Techs, and so this is a brand-new one for our community. So please spread the word for those that are interested in being in veterinary medicine or a Vet Tech, that Ventura College has a great new accredited program, and it's right here in Santa Paula. Let's see, I listened in also to a 10-year strategic planning engagement session for, again, elected officials for Cal State University Channel Islands, but actually is for the whole Cal State system. So they're really, they're seeing, you know, shifts, of course, in enrollment, shifts with funding, state funding, federal funding, and they're looking to, how can the Cal State system be the college system it needs to be for the students who need, you know, who are ready to move on and to have careers? And affordability and accessibility was key when I listened in. So if any more updates come on that, I will definitely share. Let's see, I'm part of, excuse me, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. The general manager is transitioning out. He's retiring after, I think, nine or 10 years with the sanitation district, as well as the Director of Operations, who oversees everything in the sanitation district, including toll and landfill and all of the wastewater treatment. So they are, the sanitation district is looking for a new GM and a new Director of Operations. You can go on the Ventura Regional Sanitation District website. They're also looking for three or four other employees, again, technicians and operators around solid waste and wastewater treatment jobs, so I encourage folks to look. I am part of the Southern California Edison Government Advisory Panel. There was a meeting of this, along with the Community Advisory Panel, and there was an update on wildfire recovery and response, and this was for all those elected officials and stakeholders in Southern California. The important takeaway is this, Southern California Edison is taking a closer look at our segmenting in Fillmore, also known as our bypassing. And, you know, we've, as a council, as a city, we've been advocating that we do need to increase segmenting and to distinguish between the wildland fire necessity of a power line shut, of power shut-off versus, you know, our urban, our suburban areas, not in danger of wildfire, but still being shut down during those power safety shut-offs. So our representative, Natalie Yanez, is going to be meeting with her team of engineers to look further into this. So that's really good news for Fillmore, to see if we can have additional segmenting and try to protect our city from having less of these power shutdowns when they do need to have these power safety shut-offs in areas of high wind and, of course, high fire risk. Let's see here, also, last couple of them, I attended and gave a proclamation on behalf of the City of Fillmore honoring the Real Estate Fraud Advisory Task Force for 20 years of being in the county. This is a partnership between the, I want to get it right, make sure I'm saying this right, the Ventura County Realtors Association, and also our Ventura County District Attorney. And there's not, what I learned was that this kind of fraud advisory task force doesn't exist really in other places in the state. So for Ventura County to have this, I think it's really good that we have our district attorney and those who are looking closely and trying to catch and to prosecute real estate fraud. And just like to name a couple of different things that they do, there's different issues around foreclosure, rescue, you know, these are all, you know, things that criminals who work in this area, unfortunately, who have a niche for working in real estate fraud, dealing with mortgage elimination, home improvement fraud, skimming of equity, just equity fraud in general. So I just really hand it to this group. It was really good to recognize them. And also, just, there was a great presentation from a realtor who's also a lawyer and part of this task force that said, "Fraud is even more difficult to determine because of AI, artificial intelligence." That, you know, when you used to get emails, or, again, whether it's the brokers, the mortgage lenders, or even the clients, the buyers and sellers, you know, you can kind of see it years ago, because maybe the language wasn't quite right, there was typos that kind of raised an eyebrow. Now with AI, things, you know, what is fraud can look very much, or what is real can look like fraud, what's fraud can look real, and so I just really want to thank that team for what they do. So that was really great to, and I was also part of the Channel Division dinner the other night, a couple of weeks ago, with the council members. So, oh, that's it, but we're all, we are very busy working on behalf of the city, so it's great to hear that. All right, if we're done with that, I'm going to move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is the Consent Calendar. And I do have a couple of comments on the Consent Calendar, particularly Item Number 8C. And I will call up Gabriel Candelario.
Wasn't expecting that. I am here to talk about a problem that, or an issue that I guess I had in regards to 8C. The reason that I'm talking is that I live in District Five, and I live right on Ventura Street in between El Pascador and Achihuahua. And I know that the idea of having a place show up across the street from Achihuahua in regards to the marijuana, it doesn't sit really well with me. I have a lot of nephews that come over, and they like to play in my front yard, and I don't like the idea of there being potentially armed security right across the street from me. I think that it's like a huge safety thing, and if possible, I don't really know much about the item right now. I read it as I got here, but I would say that I am deeply opposed to having a building be erected up and having that potential security there, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, another speaker also on this Agenda Item on the Consent Calendar, and I just want to make sure, name right here. Okay, Andre LaConte. Okay, Andre.
Mayor de Senor, members of City Council and staff. My name is Andre LaConte. I live on Village Square in Fillmore, and I've been a resident here in Fillmore for 10 years. I'm here today to strongly urge you to not approve the Second Reading of Zoning Ordinance Amendment Number 24-02 and Ordinance Number 25-976. I believe there's a misunderstanding of the requirements of Senate Bill 1186, or SB 1186, and this ordinance would unnecessarily expose Fillmore to risks that our community has already rejected. The staff report that was shared a couple of weeks ago here claims that SB 1186 mandates that Fillmore must allow non-storefront medicinal cannabis retailers in at least one zone within the city. However, after reviewing SB 1186, this claim appears to be incorrect. The bill explicitly states that cities cannot prohibit the delivery of medicinal cannabis to qualified patients, but it does not require any city to designate zones for non-storefront marijuana businesses. Local governments retain the rights to regulate land use for cannabis businesses as long as they do not prohibit deliveries. The City of Fillmore has already prohibited marijuana businesses through past ordinances, and this ordinance is unnecessary to comply with SB 1186. Urgency ordinances Number 24961 and 24971 were put in place to protect our community from the negative impacts of marijuana businesses. These ordinances should remain in effect to ensure Fillmore does not become a destination for medicinal cannabis distribution. Personally, as someone who lives near the business park, I'm concerned about the impact a marijuana facility would have on our community. The smell of cannabis is strong and pervasive, affecting nearby residents, businesses, and children playing in public spaces. In addition, the risk of crime and loitering associated with marijuana businesses is well documented. There is a children's playground and sports field near the business park, and I cannot stress enough how inappropriate it would be to allow a cannabis facility in that location. Our city has worked hard to create safe spaces for families and children, and introducing a marijuana business near these areas is a direct threat to that safety. And my concerns are not just theoretical. My daughter here, Hazel, was adopted from foster care due to issues directly related to so-called medical marijuana. I've seen firsthand the damage that marijuana can cause to vulnerable families. We should not be promoting its sale and distribution in Fillmore, particularly when our residents have already spoken out against it. The people of Fillmore have made our voices clear. We voted against Measure T, which would have allowed commercial medical marijuana cultivation. The will of the people must be respected. If the community has rejected cannabis businesses before, why is the city now considering approving one under a misinterpretation of SB 1186? So respectfully ask the City Council to reject the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 25976, and to maintain the existing urgency ordinances, 24961 and 24971, to keep cannabis businesses out of Fillmore. Please recognize that SB 1186 does not require non-storefront cannabis retailers, only delivery access. Please prioritize the safety and well-being of our children and families over the interests of cannabis businesses.
Okay.
Thank you for your time and for listening to the voices of Fillmore residences. I appreciate your commitment to protecting our community.
Thank you. Okay, that is, those are the comments that I have on Consent Calendar.
Yeah, this may be a question for our city attorney, but, you know, I've heard other people make the same point about this mandatory zoning issue with regard to allowing a medical, medicinal marijuana facility built in whatever zone we decide. So I'd like to, I know we can't get into it in detail right now, but I'd like to possibly pull this off the Consent Calendar.
We can, it's on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so pull it off the Consent and discuss it.
Or you can just talk about it and then decide if you want to pull it.
So I guess I'm looking for some, a response to that, and I had read what our resident, he actually had sent some emails out, and I read what he had said, and I haven't talked him specifically about it, and he's now out of the room. But do you have any idea, is he accurate? Or is he, okay, so there's, can you elaborate on where in the ordinance does it specifically state?
Sure. In the Business and Professional Codes that are established by that Bill 1186, it relies on the underlying longstanding laws about medical marijuana, and it's through that, when you combine the two, that you come to the conclusion that you do need to allow it in one zone. The majority, almost, we're aware of one city that doesn't, that took the interpretation that Mr. LaConte is recommending. All the other cities that we're aware of in California have put it in one zone, so that you're allowed to have standards and limit it to one zone. Otherwise, if someone were to challenge you, they could go anywhere they wanted.
Yeah, and that's been my understanding, since this has come back on the agenda. My frustration, you know, just as Andre was saying, is that, you know, this came before the voters, and again, it's my issue with Sacramento, where, you know, the voters wrote one thing, and then Sacramento comes down and changes whatever the voters had decided, and that, to me, is infuriating.
It's absolutely an erosion of local control, but it's fair to be honest.
Yeah, so I don't know. I mean, I don't know if anybody else has any questions about that? I mean, do you, anybody else have the same interpretation, or?
Well, I didn't have any questions, but I thought it was important to clarify, so I appreciate what you said, Tiffany. But I thought it'd be also important to clarify about, I remember in the staff report, scent, the smell was also addressed, so maybe, I don't know if yourself or if Brian would be willing just to say something about that. And also, the mention was also of parks and sensitive uses and the closeness there, and so I know we also had talked in the last council meeting about a distance from that. Just wanted to repeat it, just since we're having that conversation right now.
Brian, are you able to, or do you want me to look up the staff report?
I got it on my phone here.
But we did do everything we could to impose conditions to keep it safe.
Yeah, some of the standard baked-in restrictions in the code are to have security on-site. That doesn't necessarily say armed, but just security, so you don't get people coming to try to steal. It does have the prohibition of 600 feet from a park, or school, daycare, or any other facility of that sort. So we had the 600-foot dedication. Odor control devices and techniques must be incorporated to ensure that odors from the cannabis and medicinal cannabis products are not detectable outside the building, or in any tenant space or area adjacent to the building. So addresses the security odor and the distance from any sensitive uses. We'd have a 24-hour contact person. All storage must be within an enclosed building. Must not be visible from public space. They must contain all the appropriate licenses. So that's most of it, yeah.
Thank you.
Recreational, not, I mean, cannabis, medicinal, recreational, right?
Right.
Correct, it's only medicinal.
And no storefront.
Right, no storefront.
Yeah.
Right, so it's sort of a warehouse.
Right, and I know we had mentioned, there was also a conversation about signs, and it was, the law is, of course, allowing what signs that they may want, but also noting that because this is not a storefront retail, not open to the public space, that we would think if we were to ever have a retailer warehouse, distribution warehouse, that signage would, it wouldn't be to attract people from off the highway.
Right, that would be a waste of their money.
A waste of their time.
Right.
Right, okay.
But, and, but we have no applications or inquiries, we have no indication that anyone's remotely interested in bringing this use here.
I guess my concern too is that, you know, after, in the year 2017, when this came down the pike to all cities, after it was legalized in the state of California, and we each had to decide individually what we wanted, what we would allow, you know, there were certain mandatory things that the state was requiring, and that was that we, each resident could have six plants, and there were other minor things that we had to permit, but everything else was left up to the cities to decide. And the city, the community voted and spoke out vehemently against anything other than what was mandatory. Said no to dispensaries, said no to grows, you know, commercial grows like we're talking about tonight. And I'm just thinking, okay, so we caved to this, which I need to read, I'd like to reread it again. I mean, I take your word for it, Tiffany, you're the attorney, not me, but what is stopping Sacramento then from deciding something else and saying, "Okay, well, now you have to allow storefronts"? You know, even though the voters in this community, and, yes, voted by the state of California, that, you know, these other marijuana issues are the storefronts and whatnot, it was up to us to decide, and we did, we decided that. So what was the point of all that, that entire exercise in 2017?
Was that recreational or medicinal?
That was recreational.
That was recreational, so there are two different ones.
Right, and there have been about, there have been about four major changes in state law, changing, yeah, they keep changing what we're allowed to regulate.
Right. Right, they're changing, and without any kind of consult with the communities, I mean, we have no, we have no voice in this, and that's what, I'm just tired of that.
Yeah, Carrie, I'm absolutely in agreement with you, and I think we have something coming, I mean, what, what tools does a city have, and that's where I think we need to tap into our League of California Cities, our legislative platform, and if we want to fight that battle as much as we could from Fillmore and Sacramento, it's utilizing those, and we're, you know, we're going to be talking about legislative platform, I think, in the next couple of council meetings we have, so that's somewhere that we can go as a, as a city.
Yeah, Carrie, if it makes you feel better, I mean, I also went through the same exercise, hey, we've, we've already voted this down, we, you know, the community does not want this, it's kind of being forced down our throat, but I, I think I agree with, with what Christina's saying, I think the battle now, we need to, we need to shift our focus on to Cal cities, you know, to have them advocate for us, and honestly, for us too, we, we can each reach out to our state legislators and tell them how unhappy we are, because our voice does matter, and we do speak for our community, so I think that's an important piece that we can do as well.
I have a question about this, though, there's a, we can limit the, what is around there, like 600 feet away from a playground, a park, childcare, those kinds of things, right? There's, we can limit that, that zone.
As long as there really is property available that some, a business could come in, you can't put so many regulations on it that it would be impossible for anyone to really find a site, so staff had that in mind to keep the community as safe as possible while still leaving sites that would be available, so it wouldn't have the result of pretending we were allowing it, but not really allowing it.
So, so that's more of a, of a city, a city idea and a city plan to?
Yeah, city staff came up with, if we have to have a zone, let's do the business park zone, and then let's think about the conditions to propose and the restrictions to impose to protect people to the largest extent possible.
And so my question is, if, if it is then zoned, can further development happen that might have a park? Or if it's, can more development happen in the future where somebody wants to open some sort of daycare, or are they now kind of buffered away from?
I mean, those uses wouldn't be allowed right now in that, in the business park zone, yeah.
Thank you.
Those are great questions. Okay, we've had, we've had a discussion, and if anyone had anything other, any other comments on either 8B or 8C, but we had a discussion on, I'm sorry, 8A or 8B. If not, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I approve the council's approval of the consent calendar.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, okay, motion carries for one. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on the, from the consent calendar onto new business, so item number 9A, consideration of hiring HDL companies for sales tax monitoring and auditing services. Good evening, Deborah.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. Mayor Viasenior, Deborah Cavallaro, Finance Director. Item 9A has staff recommending to city council to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with HDL companies for sales tax monitoring and auditing services. To adopt resolution number 25-4053, designating HDL companies as the city's authorized representative to examine tax, sales and use tax records. On January 8th, 2019, city council approved a contract with HDL companies. HDL was also approved by resolution to be an authorized representative to examine sales and use tax records maintained by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, or CDTFA, on behalf of the city. HDL has provided quality work, and due to their involvement relating to ongoing audit work, staff recommend to the city continue to use HDL. The presented contract is for a two-year initial term with the option to extend additional two years on mutual agreement. HDL's quarterly fees cover ongoing analysis, reports, legislative support, and unlimited access to staff for any questions. HDL would also receive 15% of any new increased or recovered sales and use tax revenue received by the city as a result of HDL's audit and recovery services, if we elect to utilize the service. The contract is not to exceed $30,000, excluding the audit and recovery services. With the adoption of the resolution, it will also reaffirm HDL's city's representative designation. The resolution also requires HDL to disclose information of those sales and tax records only to the following officials of the city: city manager, assistant city manager, finance director, accounting supervisor, city attorney, and any other officer employee of the city designated in writing by the city manager and to the CDTFA. The services have been budgeted in the general fund for fiscal year 2425 and will be budgeted in subsequent years. This meets the city's council for financial management goal. The alternative for this recommendation is to take no action at this time or to revive alternative direction to staff. That's into my presentation, available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Does council have any questions?
Yes.
On your mic?
So how much have they found, just out of curiosity, in the last two years? Do we have an accounting of that?
I can, I can give that message to you. Right now, since we don't have as many new coming in, it's probably a smaller dollar amount that I can recall, but there has been years where they've received, recovered possibly 13,000 to 15,000, $20,000.
Okay.
And this also is not only for the city, there's also what we call the county pool, which we are part of with Ventura County. They will also examine records for, for example, online orders, and then they will then distribute that tax to the various cities, based upon the number, amount of sales tax you have ranked within the county.
Yeah, and the reason I ask, obviously, is if we're going to pay them X amount, we want to make sure that they're at least recovering the amount that we're paying them, right? Otherwise, it doesn't make sense.
Right, now, for that 15% is only if they recover, we don't pay them any of that. The rest of it is for, to present, the basic is for, again, legislation updates, present quarterly how we're doing on our sales tax, if there is any issue that they, they have seen, and also any other questions we may have with sales tax.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I know you, you mentioned the 15%, and so my, my one question is, is that an industry standard?
Yeah, correct.
Figured it would be so, but I just wanted to check with you in the meeting. Okay, so this is something that these sort of sales tax recovery auditing services, that's what their, their usual percentage is back on the charge, okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all right, with that, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with HDL companies for sales tax monitoring, auditing services, and adopt resolution 25-4053, designating HDL companies as the city's authorized representative to examine sales and use tax records.
Okay, have a motion, does there a second? All right, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, moving on to our next business item, 9B, approval of the updated records retention schedule and future administrative updates. Good evening, Rowley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members and Fillmore residents. So staff is recommending two items tonight specifically for the record retention. The first one is to approve the records retention schedule in accordance with Government Code Section 34090 by Gladwell Governmental Services, which is our professional record management consulting, consultant that specializes in these updates. The second one today is to authorize our city manager to approve future annual updates administratively without requiring council approval, so something that can be taken off of your list to do. So the city is required to maintain these updated records, it is updated every single year. Typically, how the process works, our consultant Gladwell, Gladwell Governmental Services will look at what we currently have, and then they'll, she'll compare it to what state law requires, and then advises of any updates, and so we recently just updated it, well, we haven't officially updated it until you guys get, you guys approve it, of course, and so, yeah, so we just make sure that it's updated, and we, the staff follows that, those requirements. And so I'm here today to present this resolution that will allow the city manager, moving forward, to approve, and that way we don't have to bring it back every year to council, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? No, all right. Comments, okay, I just want to make a comment that seeing all the listing so well organized, you know, all the different categories, it seems like it would be, you're doing a really excellent job of that, and allowing all the departments to see what different records in each department need to be held and to what end, so well done, well done on the document.
Thank you, and, yeah, I mean, definitely have a really good company that helps us with that, so, yes, but we definitely will follow the schedule, and every single year we, we make sure that we follow all the requirements, so we get good record-keeping here.
Great, yeah. Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'd like to move to approve the recommendations from city staff on, do I have to read them?
Does it need to read both of them?
I don't mind reading them.
Okay, go for it.
I did such a bad job last time, I gotta make it right.
Go for it.
One, approve the updated records retention schedule prepared in accordance with Government Code Section 34090 by Gladwell Government Services, Inc., the city's record management consultant specializing in California local government records. And two, authorize the city manager to approve future annual updates administratively without requiring city council's approval.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. All right, our next item is 9C, land transfer easement agreement and MOU for sewer and recycled water relocation within the Fillmore Unified School District.
Hi, I'm hiding in my computer over there. Good evening, esteemed mayor, and mayor pro tem and city council. I do have a presentation for you tonight, of course, I've got to find it. There it is, okay. So, uh-oh. I don't know what this is, all right. We're going to talk about the Fillmore Unified School District's athletic complex that they're building. You may recall in November, we talked about this, that yay, we're getting a new high school gymnasium that will include a new parking field, it's sited on the existing baseball field adjacent to the track, just north of the Fillmore Tennis and Aquatic Center. The new building will necessitate relocation of a public sewer main, a public recycled water main, and the transfer of a strip of land from the city to the district to make the project work. The, what is happening? Hmm, I'm missing slides. Okay, so, the recommendation in the staff report, there are four things that I wanted to mention, that we consider the approval of resolution number 254052 for the transfer of the strip of land along the north and west portions of the Fillmore Tennis and Aquatic Center to FUSD, consideration of approval of an easement over the land transferred to FUSD, providing rights of use to the city, and consider approval of a memorandum of understanding related to permitting and approvals for relocation of the existing public sewer line and reclaimed water line by FUSD. And finally, authorize the city manager to complete the vacation of existing sewer easement and acceptance of new easements over the relocated utilities. You know what, I want to just double-check if I'm just opening an older report on this and make sure, because this isn't, no, this is the right one, okay, just making sure, sorry. Okay, so, um, to go first on the recommendation for the transfer of the strip of land, there is shown in the red hatched here, the little strip of land above the tennis and aquatic center and around the side between the track and the, the tennis courts, that currently is owned by the city of Fillmore with an agreement, a use agreement from the school, to the school district, for them to be able to use it for access and utilities. During their project startup, the school district realized that their new site layout utilizes especially the strip in between the tennis center and the school site as a new area of their parking and drive aisle. The fencing out there already, this strip of land feels like the school district, because it's outside of the aquatic center fencing, and nobody really realized that it was city property until pretty well into the project site layout, and so they came to us and said, ah, can we work with you together to, to make this happen? So, um, that L-shaped parcel is, was originally put into an easement between the city and FUSD in July 2008. That full agreement is attached to the staff report, which it was in November as well, so you're probably familiar with it. It only has a 60-year term, so it will sunset in 2068, and it's not meeting the Department of the State Architects litmus test that they have full control over all property that the gymnasium is going to occupy. That necessitates us to transfer the property to the school district. So I want to give a shout-out, a huge thank you to our fearless city manager and to the school superintendent Chrissy and her team. This has been a big effort, the city attorney's office, we, we've all been working together to bring this all to fruition. You will find attached to your staff report a resolution, along with the new grant deed and an easement agreement that's before you tonight that will effectuate the change, which basically takes that red hatch strip and gives it to the school district, which we, they, the school team surveyed it, made sure that this new change of property is going to be basically from the existing school fence onto the school property, becomes their property, and the rest of it stays city property. And then there's the agreement that now gives the city rights for ingress egress and utilities on the school property in the same parcels that we're transferring, so we're flipping the script and saying, okay, now you own the property and give us rights to use it. So it just, and it, it helps everything happen, right? So that's items one and two in your recommendation. Moving on to the utilities, right? So you'll see, this is our utilities map, the pink line is our recycled water, there's Fillmore High School, there's the tennis and aquatic center, the green line is the sewer, the pink line is the recycled water, the blue square that just came in is the new athletic complex, the siding of it. And so you can see the building is going to be plopped right on top of a sewer and a water main, and so again, been a very much team effort, like, how do we handle that? We're going to have to relocate, you know, that green sewer main takes all the flow from First Street down to Second Street, and then on down to the sewer plant, and so it's a, it's a city water, a city sewer main, and the recycled water takes our recycled water up to areas north. So we've been working together again on this with the school staff. We're just this close to approving the relocation plans for both the sewer and the water, and what we've done is, and then there's an easement over that area that's 20 feet wide that will need to be vacated, so that they don't have an easement through the building, obviously, and then we'll need new easements for sewer and recycled water to be given to the city in the alignment of the new facility. So it's a lot of moving parts, right? And a lot of people have to do a lot of different things. So we've worked together with FUSD to lay out the roles and responsibilities of, of all the land transfer and agreements and easements and, you know, relocations and recitals of a memorandum of understanding to define roles and responsibilities, who's doing what by when, and how's this all going to work, which has been very helpful for everybody to be clear on what's going to happen. So the MOU is attached to your staff report, and it basically, in general, says that FUSD will prepare the public improvement plans, which we're already doing, and for city review approval permitting an inspection of all the changes to our public infrastructure, including the sewer, recycled water, and the street plants, because they'll be making changes along Second Street as well, which is the city street, that they'll deposit fees to cover that they'll deposit fees to cover the pass-through consulting costs for the contract city engineering to process all of that review permitting approval inspection. The city will be covering their own staff time, their own city attorney time. The school district's covering their own staff time, own city attorney time. And FUSD will provide, and the MOU requires that under construction, the insurance and demnities, obligating, listing the city as a dual obligee on the performance and payment bonds that they're going to require of the contractor during construction. So that the city's covered because this is in a public easement or in public right-of-way. And so all of the normal things that we handle through like the subdivision improvement agreement or something with the normal developers also captured in this important memorandum of understanding by and between the city and the school district. I think we've worked out all the finer details. Those are the bigger things that the, um, MOU covers. And, um, the city, for our part, will review, approve, inspect, and accept the public improvements. We will do our part to vacate the existing sewer easement upon receipt of replacement easements. And so it's kind of like, it's all written down, the recital's there, what's driving this, why it's all happened, what has to happen, and then who's doing what. And so we're recommending that the land transfer be contingent upon entering into the MOU with the city. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight. I think that gets it. I think the last item besides the recommendation of the approval of the MOU is that we also include authorization for the city manager to go ahead and approve the recording of the new easements, accept the easements on behalf of the city when they come our way, and approve the vacation of the existing sewer easement so we don't have to come back and bother you with that later on. So I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, Roxanne. Great presentation. Do we have any questions?
No, just a comment. Very thorough. Looks like you guys definitely did your homework. You know, no, you guys did a great job, I think.
Thank you.
No, I was just going to say the same, that I think this is a perfect example of great partnership work between the school district and the city and making sure all the Ts are crossed, all the Is dotted, you know. And because it is, you know, it's a big, it's a big movement for the city to do this. And so I'm really glad that we're working closely with them in this partnership.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I did have one question, but I think you answered it in your presentation. Is how, are there any city infrastructures that will be impacted by, like, what? You said, you mentioned, I think we had ingress and egress rights though, that the...
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So on this land transfer, that, the, that same parcel of land that the school uses to get, to access their sports field and their, um, buildings is also used as a secondary egress from the aquatic center and the pool for emergency access. We don't use it often, but it is the other way out if something were to happen. And that's what the easement agreement does, is still gives us right to use that area. And so the way that the improvements are all being built protects that access from the city side as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
I did have another question. If you go back to the slide showing the building. So will that change, let me make sure, the pink, it is the, so the recycled water line and then also the green line represents?
The sewer.
Oh, the sewer. So the sewer and the recycled water. So is that going to be coming back to council when you say you're almost done with the rerouting of those and where they're going to be? Or is that something that's going to be?
It will be, we're almost done with the improvement plans. And those will be approved by yours truly, the city engineer, on behalf of the city, like we normally do for development or capital improvements. This MOU is your opportunity to, you know, say if there's anything else special that's needed. But we've, you know, they've done the hydraulic report and the sewer, you know, we're making sure that the rerouted sewer meets all of our city standards. And then we'll be teaming with the school district so that they don't double pay. Normally, the Office of the State Architect won't inspect public improvements. And this is an odd thing because it's a public improvement that goes right through their school site. It's on their school property. So we won't, we don't want them to have to pay twice for inspection. So we'll be coordinating with their school inspector and our public works inspector to make sure we're not like double dipping on things and trying to keep it cost-effective for the school.
That's great. That's good. Okay, thank you. All right, my questions answered. Everyone's good? Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I will make a motion to approve, consider approval of Resolution Number 25-4052 for the transfer of the strip of land along the north and west portions of Fillmore Tennis and Aquatic Center land parcel to the Fillmore Unified School District. Consider approval of an easement agreement over the land transfer to Fillmore Unified, providing rights of use to the city. Consider approval of memorandum of understanding related to permitting and approvals for relocation of existing public sewer line and reclaimed water line by Fillmore Unified and authorize the city manager to complete the vacation of existing sewer easement and acceptance of new easement over relocated utilities.
One second.
I'd like to just point out, we're not considering it, we're actually approving it, right? Because you did say a consider, so it's actually an approval. I mean, the language, the language says consider, but we're actually approving it. I just wanted to point that out.
To me?
Yes, because you made the motion, Carrie.
I think she's just reading verbatim from the recommendation.
Yeah, you're right. I'm reading it verbally. Okay, get your point. Scratch the considers. All approved.
Approval. All right.
I want you to read it all over again, John.
Actually, I already have, I have a first and John has a second. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
And I found my missing slide. It was moved to the end, to the recommendations. Thanks, you guys.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Roxanne. All right, okay. Forward the agenda. We are now on item 9D. Approval of the 25-26 service level request and one-year contract extension with the Ventura County Animal Services.
Thank you, mayor. That's my item. Thank you, Etika. We are here tonight asking you to approve a one-year amendment extension for the Ventura County Animal Services. As you all know, we contract with Ventura County Animal Services for our animal needs within the city jurisdiction. We want to ensure that there's a continuation of animal services for the city and our residents. What we contract out in a very high, like, level, it's sheltering, field services, and licensing. And there has been a change on the Ventura County Animal Services leadership. They hired a director. And so his name is Esteban, and Esteban wanted to have a better understanding of the operations before we enter into another negotiation of contracts. So the contract that you currently approved a few years ago has a term that allows the city to amend the contract for an additional year, and that's what we're requesting. We are continuing the three-year weighted average of costs, which we spread it through all of the other jurisdictions that contract out with Ventura County. The initial agreement was signed by the council in 2022 with the expiration date of 2025, but we're asking for that additional year to allow us to continue services. I think I already talked about that. And the cost that will be needed for this year's budget, which we have already included in the preparation of presenting the budget, is $169,682.65. That's our contribution for Fillmore. And again, animal sheltering and bordering, veterinary care and treatment, licensing fee processing, and the animal control field services. For the record, I do want to indicate that I did have a typo on my staff report. I did transpose the amounts. There is an increase on their animal controlled field services. So it's increasing by $15, so it's going up from $130 to $145. And we have dedicated 20 hours out of our contract for field services. And that's pretty much what it captures. So that's in a nutshell. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Etika. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing that, entertain a motion on this item.
I move that the city council approve a one-year contract extension, amending the original contract with Ventura County Animal Services, including the 2025-2026 service level request for Ventura County Animal Services to continue providing animal services to the city's residents.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
All right, I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our last business item is 9E. Consideration of the 2024 Annual Progress Report on the Status of the City's General Plan Housing Element. Good evening, Brian.
Yeah, this is the 2024 Annual Progress Report. And many of you have seen many of these. They fluctuate here and there. But overall, this is a requirement of the state that we provide an annual update on where we are in meeting the housing needs or housing construction, and it's based on RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This is a summary table of where things stand in this planning period under our current housing element. In 2024, we entitled 130, oh, I'm sorry, we entitled 152 total units. 132 of those are above moderate income market rate. And then we've got a mix of very low and low. And the goal here is to monitor the progress toward meeting that number on the lower left, 415. That's our total number. That's what we're required to meet by the state. So the spread here is to meet the different income levels. And the only way you can meet the 415 number is to actually issue a building permit. So even though we have many projects that are entitled, it doesn't mean we can take them off from our arena number. It's only once we issue a building permit. And then also in the background in some of this is the housing that's still in the bridges, which was entitled many, many years ago, but they're just working in phases. So there's no building permit, and you also don't see a record of entitlement, but there's, those are still back there in the background. So there's a little bit more housing going on than what you see here. But our total is looking pretty good, especially in the market rate level. You know, we do, we do okay there. We approved Creekside. And then just prior to Creekside, we approved something called Fillmore Terrace, which is a 100% low-income housing project. And we approved a project called Riverview Gardens. So those are two significant entitlements that are sitting on the books, and we're waiting for the developer to come in and start building them. So those numbers are reflected in units entitled 2021 to 2023. And as those become realized, they'll then tick through. And I mentioned that we're trying to meet that 415 number, and that's based on a spread of income levels from very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. So that's our breakdown. That's what was assigned to us, which is a workable number. Currently, our zoning, so in planning, we look at our zoning and make sure that we have the adequate capacity on paper. But what really drives housing is the market, money, cost of capital. And so whether those things come in or not is not so much in our control, but we can say that, you know, we do have the availability. And we have the availability by a lot. We're well over 200% capacity above what RENA actually requires us to have. So it would be good if we can get some more for-sale units. I always say that for-sale would be good because, you know, it's the American dream and you can get residents into the housing market and actually buying properties. And I say that because, I don't know if you saw a paper in the Star Today, there was an article that came out, said February was the highest median income price ever for any February. It's dipped a little since summer, but it oscillates. But we're still pushing really big median income housing numbers in Ventura County. Fillmore is at the lowest, 700. Ojai was the highest, I believe, north of 1.5 million. So we're at the bottom at 700,000, which is hard to imagine. If you're a first-time home buyer, you're probably paying easily north of half a million dollars for a house. So to the extent that we can get more, apartments are great for low-income, low-income renters who need to get a house and get a roof over their head. I don't think that that affects the housing price so much. The median income price is still going to stay high unless we get market rate, which hopefully it's coming when we get Creekside in, we can get some first-time home buyers. Staff's recommendation, none of that is really relevant to the APR, but I just thought that article was interesting today. The report is due to be submitted by April 1st. So with your direction, we'll proceed with that. Staff's recommendation here is receive and file the annual progress report and submit to the Housing and Community Development Department. I'll be here to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Brian on his report?
I have one question.
Sure.
Do these numbers indicate the project that we had approved, I don't know, it was a few years back, on Main and Fillmore Street?
So you're, are you?
Do you remember? Kevin, do you remember that?
Cabrillo?
It's right across, yeah.
Oh.
The Foye Project.
No.
No.
That map never recorded.
Okay.
It expired several years ago.
Yeah, I thought that sometime last year, possibly the year before, that the Department of Housing and Community Development created additional categories, like extremely low. Are there additional categories that we're not seeing on this chart? Are they lumped in with very low?
Yeah, there is something called extremely low. And it's, we don't have a specific number for that, but they just say it's assumed to be about half of your very low will be at some range of what they'll call extremely low.
So extremely low was one additional category. Was it, were there any others?
I believe that was it.
And I think just to comment that affordable housing developers, when they're making for low income, they often have an extremely low group of apartments. Any other, any other questions?
Some of the Fillmore Terrace apartments would likely qualify under the extremely low once we, once we start to see the actual rent numbers.
Okay. Brian, I do have a question. I see zeros across for moderate. And I know that's, it seems like it's always been a difficult area. Is there any moderate income building that you know that's going on in the county or even the tri-county area?
In the county? I'm sure there are, but I can't cite one specifically.
That's okay. I was wondering if you knew. It's off the top of your head.
Yeah, we may be getting some moderate in some of the prospects that are coming through right now. Yeah.
All right. Okay, no one has any other questions? We do have a public speaker. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, for Cindy Diaz Telly. Come on up.
Thank you very much. And to answer your question before the timer starts, I believe moderate, city of Oxnard in the River Park neighborhood has some moderate income units that are part of the city program. I believe those are categorized as moderate because I've sold some of them.
Oh, great to know. Thank you.
So, good evening.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Viasenior and respected council members and staff. My name is Cindy Diaz Telly, and I am here to speak to you this evening on a few different levels as a speaker. I am, of course, a resident of Riverwalk here for almost 25 years. I am a 25-year veteran of the real estate market and have sold in every market imaginable. I am a past president of the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors, who is here, why I'm here this evening. I am a 19-year member of the Real Estate Fraud Advisory Team, and I am their current vice chair. I would encourage you, if you all want to take a note, it is refat.org. And that site has everything right down to the complaint form if you know of someone that has been affected by real estate fraud, or you can reach out to me directly. Additionally, I am the current 2025 chairperson of the California Association of Realtors Fair Housing Policy Division. So anything that falls in the neighborhood of fair housing policy in Sacramento, I am in charge of. And I sit on the National Association of Realtors Fair Housing Committee. So I go once a year and lobby at Capitol Hill. So with that being said, they have sent me here this evening, the Ventura County Coastal Association has sent me here this evening, first of all, to commend Fillmore for their continued commitment in meeting the RENA numbers. And we know what a challenge it can be with the fluctuation of the real estate market. The recent progress updates show a focus on increasing the housing supply... The recent progress updates show a focus on increasing the housing supply across different income levels, an effort we, of course, wholeheartedly support. We believe these strides will not only fulfill state requirements, but also foster a more diverse community where individuals as well as families can flourish. As Realtors, we see firsthand how the cost of housing impacts everyone, especially those striving for homeownership in a competitive market. It can be something as simple as an increase in the interest rate, that is, the difference between somebody being able to buy an entry-level condo and remaining a renter. It can happen that quickly. Our latest economic and housing report provided to all of you at our last visit indicated that the prices remain high throughout Ventura County, including Fillmore, making it critical to advance initiatives that broaden affordability. We would encourage the city to expand programs that enable moderate and middle-income buyers, who are often our teachers, our public servants, and our first responders, to purchase homes in Fillmore. Down payment assistance programs, flexible zoning for small lot or missing middle-to developments, and continued support for accessory dwelling units, known as ADUs, would continue to bring opportunities within reach. From our perspective, city policies that streamline the approval process for well-planned for-sale projects and that reduce regulatory barriers can further bolster homeownership rates and projects.
Okay, so you'll just have to wrap up a little bit.
I'm sorry, honey.
Just to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to thank you for continuing to partner with us and to reach out to us with any questions that you might have going forward, and we, we will be back to visit you once again to give you an updated report later this year of how housing continues to move forward in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, great. All right. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? Brian, actually, I think I do have another question for you. Sorry about that, just remembered it. And it was on our programs, our list of our programs, and something just since, you know, we've been talking about fires and there's been the new fire, high fire risk maps that I think include a bit more portion of our city. And again, this is just something that came to my mind. I think one of the actions in our housing element, I think it's action two-point-two, the safety element and adoption of environmental justice policies, but what it says here in the objective is identify flood hazards and address the risk of fire in certain lands upon which revision of the housing element. So basically, I guess my question is, as we're, you know, doing the progress report, is there anything, do you see things happening in the future around the, the new mapping and, you know, how it might affect the element? Just wanted to get your.
We haven't put a number to it, but the, the fire zone definitely does affect ADUs. We currently prohibit ADUs in the high, very, or the very high fire hazard zone.
Right.
And then otherwise, you can do other measures to reduce fire sufficiently, but in that zone, it's, it's restricted, so it would reduce that availability.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. That's, you know, I wasn't even thinking of ADUs, I just thought in general, but you're right, we adopted that policy.
Yes.
Too long ago.
Yeah, and, and the, the Creekside development, which would be in the very high fire hazard zone as mapped, would have problems, but they're already approved through entitlement, and we have measures in there actually to reduce the fire hazards on that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We, we actually anticipated that it would be in the zone. So we did, we did do Fuel Mod and we did some other restrictions. Yeah, so we do try to sharpen our pencil and look at those zones and what kinds of things can you do to modify a project to keep it moving forward without a, a, a complete prohibition.
Right.
But when it comes to ADUs, given the tight access and things like that, we are currently prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Brian, is, is there a, any statewide building code movement regarding, I, I know that the Palisades Fire got a lot of press, and especially the homes that did not get destroyed, and some of the practice, some of the building practices that they used to prevent those buildings, those homes from going up in flames. We know that there are best practices for those. Is there, is there any kind of a movement in that direction to, because I, I mean, I guess selfishly, you know, we're all affected by this because of the insurance rates, right? And so the, the more we can build in some of these best practices, I would think that would affect the insurance rates as well, because then their exposure goes down and obviously our rates go down. So I don't know if you can address that in a short.
I can help answer that if you want. So every three years, there are new state building codes that the city adopts by reference with local adjustments as needed. Next year, well, at the end of this year, ideally, we'll be adopting the ones that will go into effect next year. Some of the homes that weren't damaged or weren't damaged as much in both of the recent buyers were newer homes because they are built to more current standards, but the standards don't require retrofitting, so the older homes wouldn't have those, they would have materials that are no longer allowed to be used. So usually, insurance companies do look into things like what your roofing material is, you know, what your siding is, things like that, when they're determining individual home policies to see how fire-safe your property may or may not be. But I'm sure the, there will be even further changes. I heard, for example, they're not going to allow landscaping near homes and things like that. I'm sure people will be upset about it, but there will be definitely more measures to help make homes fire and other buildings fire-safe.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment. I think you could probably see happening more, you know, when you go to Las Vegas and you see the, you know, the hardscaping that is around houses, I think that's just going to be more common, you know, in California.
Well, I think something as, as simple as like my next-door neighbor, they had a shake roof until about ten years ago, and, I mean, talk about inviting a fire to, to take down your house. I mean, you know, the roof is just inviting it, you know, a fire, so, but they, they changed it to asphalt, so.
May I share one little stat about insurance?
Sure, go ahead and come onto the mic. That way the public can hear you.
This is interesting to know, actually. Last year, almost fourteen percent of all transactions in the state of California failed. They were in escrow and they failed to close due to insurability issues. Either the zone that the home was in, what the policy might cost for that new homeowner, and they couldn't afford it, or they couldn't get insurance. So in the past, part of the contingency stream of a, of a prog, of an escrow would be your inspections and your appraisal and things of that nature, your loan approval. Now, as soon as we take a listing, I'm looking for the front page of the insurance waiver. When we have a buyer enter escrow, we successfully negotiate an offer, the first thing we're telling the buyers to do is to seek out their insurance. Before, it was an afterthought. Who has your insurance on your automobiles? Give them a call. They'll, they'll give you a price for your new policy. Those days are gone now, and they will continue to get harder and more difficult. But last year, that, when they gave me that stat a couple of months ago, I just about slid off my chair, because that's a lot of transactions in the state of California, thirteen point eight-nine percent failed while they were in escrow. And many of those were in Ventura County, because we now had, we, with the exception of Port Winneby, every city in the tri-county has been touched by fire in some way since two thousand seventeen. Real stats.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for sharing, Cindy. Appreciate that. Okay, thank you. That was a really good discussion, and thank you again for the, for the report. Thank you for, for having a, a great annual progress report here that we can continue to go off of. All right. Yes. Motion to receive and file.
File?
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, we usually, I think we covered this one mostly, but does anyone have any additional committee commission or board reports?
Well, since we really did that early on in the meeting, what we didn't do is what item seven really was, which is reports, recommendations, and comments. So one recommendation I would like to make, and see if I get a couple of other council members to agree, is to either consolidate number, agenda item seven with ten. Or, I, I mean, we do it backwards almost every meeting now.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I, I think keeping it at the front, I think makes sense, because then we can, we can inform the public as well, because at this point in the meeting, I don't see a whole lot of public out there. So I think keeping it up at number seven is, would be my recommendation as well.
And I'm good with that. Can we do that automatically or?
Okay, I think we have support from, from the council members to do that. All right. Thank you for that.
No direction? Okay.
Oh, okay, well, we have support to potentially agendize this change. Or do we need to?
It is, yeah, we had to bring a staff report last time. I can work on just bringing something for you to, you know, discuss, and then I'm understanding that we will then pretty much consolidate the city council reports, recommendations, comments, and then committee commissions and board reports into one item. Is that the right direction? Okay, I'll work on bringing that back.
That's fine, yeah.
Just double checking, okay. Okay, great.
And then one other issue, and we kind of touched on this a little bit, and I appreciated Councilmember Garnica's and our mayor's comments about communicating with our elected officials locally on some issues that we disagree with Sacramento and utilizing the League of California Cities to advocate for us more. And I think that's all, that, those are good things, those are things that we should be doing, and I know I certainly don't do it enough. And I'm wondering if it would be something that we could more, do more formally, I mean, whether we come up with some kind of, let's say, an ad hoc committee where we can talk about, okay, what policies can we implement as a council, where we can focus on these things, if that's the way we want to go. I mean, I, I like what some of the cities are doing, like Manhattan Beach, for example, where they, they just are fighting. We don't have the money to fight Sacramento like they do, but I would like to see us make a more concerted effort somehow, some way, and maybe even just bring it back for a discussion, come up with some ideas on how we can utilize our elected officials in a more effective manner as a, as a commission, as a council, as a, a single body, and also the same with our League of California Cities. But we just, we just need to fight back more than what we're doing.
Carrie, I, I think, I think we, we have the power to do that. I mean, all we have to do is, we agree in public as a council to agendize it and then approve it, and we, we can, we can do that. We can make a statement like that.
Elaborate more on what you're thinking. Elaborate.
Okay, so what, let's say that we, we say, okay, we'd like to agendize, for example, putting together a letter to our state representatives to, in opposition of SB, whatever the number was for the medical marijuana thing. We agendize it, we discuss it. If it's approved, then we send a letter as the city council with all the, you know, if it's unanimous or whatever, to all of our local elected, you know, representatives at the state. And I think that would send a powerful message, honestly.
Yeah, and at the same time, I'm cognizant of not trying to, not burdening staff with drafting more letters on our behalf, and I know that.
But, but it's an important thing, though, Carrie. I mean, that's, I mean, I don't know, I, I agree with what you're saying about burdening, but hey, part of the job for us is to represent the, what the people want. And so to me, that's very important work, and I think it would rise to the level of, you know, but I think, I think I know what you're saying. You're saying, hey, we just agreed on a bunch of goals for the city count, for the city manager, are we now going to add to those, right? Is that kind of where you're going with that?
Well, I think there's things that we can do as a body without burdening more of our staff, but go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to mention to you, yes.
Mayor and council, I have already prepared an updated legislative platform, which will be coming forward for your consideration on the meeting on April eighth. It is a very comprehensive legislative platform that will provide guidance to staff where, which we're monitoring closely with our lobbyists, and also we work closely with the League of Cities. And so we're going from a legislative platform that had three pages to one that has close to twenty. And so we are dividing all of the different areas that the city, you know, receives legislation on, such as like parks, public works, water, sewer, economic development, those are just some of the homelessness. And so we do, we will be monitoring those bills, and then whenever we see something, the legislative platform will give us the authority. The mayor, the mayor per temp can sign the letter, or the city manager in the absence of, of them too, to send whether we oppose or approve a bill. And I think that will give us a turnaround and be more effective in, in making an impact, because a lot of times ends up happening is, by the time that, that letter of support needs to be sent and we prepare the staff report and bring it back to you, it's too late. And so that's coming back for your, all of your consideration. We will have a lengthy discussion on April eighth. The staff report is already being reviewed by our city attorney, and you'll be able to say, yes, we like that direction you are proposing, or no, go ahead and remove this opposition or support, and then we can discuss, and then you guys can give us direction.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that, that sounds really good. Another recommendation I was going to make, Carrie, to sort of, along with, with letters and having a legislative platform that we can all, you know, utilize and, and do advocacy for, is these statewide policy committees that I know, I'm sure Carrie, if you're sitting on one right now too. Okay, great. And, and if there's, and if all of those committees falls under a topic that we particularly want to advocate for, is just trying to work within those committees to, to, to express our views as, again, Fillmore, small town, local control, you know, again, just taking sort of the, the issue of the, the local medicinal cannabis warehouse. Where does that fit into one of the potential committees? And maybe bringing that up for conversation and, and trying to see if, if via the committee level at CalCities to get it to move forward and to garner more support, because again, how we're feeling as a small city, there's got to be lots of other cities that are feeling the same way, I would think. Yeah, and then maybe, again, limited in staff resources, limited in time, aren't doing more than maybe sending letters, but I think the policy committees are a, a good avenue to, to try to move things forward.
Yeah, we do have policy committees, I'm, I'm, sit on the league's Public Safety Committee, and we're meeting on Thursday on, in Burbank. So I'll have a day-long session on these public safety issues. But I don't know, I just want to be more proactive so that we are not letting outside entities, specifically legislators from Sacramento, write bills that have nothing to do with Fillmore's interest and sometimes are counter to Fillmore's interest. And I, I've been doing this long enough now that it, it just infuriates me, and I hate that we lose control because we don't fight back.
Yeah.
I'd like to also mention that it, it is a little bit disheartening when, when people from the public communicate their concerns and sometimes just having to look at them and say, this is out of our hands, you know, and they want us, they want it to be on our hands because they elected us, and then we then have to turn around and, and not give them hope on that. So thank you for, for bringing that up.
Agreed. Agreed. Thank you. Okay, so while we still have this item on number ten, before it's consolidated, is there any more, any more that we want to share? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item number eleven, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start, and then after I'm done with my reports, I'm going to call Deborah. She's going to be giving another update, but I'll start first. So I want to first of all, thank Georgie Herardo, our Senior Management Analyst with Public Works. He has been instrumental on spearheading the downtown beautification project, and what that means is that we have contracted out with our landscape contractor, and they are in the process of planting more, different variety of plants so that the look in downtown looks a bit more harmonious and, and it flows better. It's part of our downtown economic goal, so there was a delay. We were supposed to have before and after pictures tonight, but unfortunately, the contractor had a little bit of delay with the, the plans that had been ordered, and so that will be completed hopefully by the end of the week, and we'll provide another update once it's completed. On April fifth, we have the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. It will be at the Public Works Yard from eight-thirty to one-thirty PM. You just need to show proof that you're a resident. There's additional information on our website. I also want to provide you a overview of what staff has been doing at the park. I also want to provide you a overview of what staff has been doing at the parks. So, the facility staff members have been working on pressure washing the bleachers at Shields Park, so thank you very much to our facility staff, and also the bathrooms. We know that there has been issues with our pest controls, particularly with gophers and squirrels. Staff has been working with them since December on trying to mitigate the issue. There have been, the ground squirrels remain the difficult to control, and the, the gophers, as we know, require consistent maintenance. We have gone through the process. California has actually passed a bit more of a regulatory limitations on the type of controls that we can use for the, the rodents, but we are continuing to inspect those. Georgie's actually also spearheading that on a weekly basis, and we're working with the contractor, and they are actually looking at every facility on a weekly basis. So, we're trying our best to, to go out there, fill in the, the holes that, you know, end up happening overnight, but it's being worked down, and I just want the public to know that it's something that we are taking seriously, and we're just trying to make sure that we can mitigate that. As you could, you probably saw on Instagram, Facebook, and also on our website, that we have been awarded the $1.49 million for the Encampment Resolution Grant. I want to provide clarity to the public, we are working on establishing sub-agreements with all of our partnerships. The state is in the process of sending the money to the city, and so, once we receive that, the partnership will be established. This is to work for the river bottom particularly, so the homeless that we have at the river bottom, and what it will entail is, and it will entail case management, intense case management with the partnership of Spirit of San Pola. Then after that, we will look at transitioning those members into the interim sheltering, and then our goal is to, after the intense management, be able to provide permanent housing. So, as we start deploying the resources out, and, and I will start providing more updates to the community, so that everyone's informed on how that's moving forward. I'm also happy to report that we are in the process of recruiting a new Assistant City Manager. We have received a lot of applications, and the, the recruitment is in process, and I will be providing with additional information. I just need to catch my breath, I'm sorry. And the last thing is, the coffee with the city manager, I have a date. It will be April 18th, which is a Friday, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. The video is in production. I really tried to have that up and running today, but I had a little bit of interruption, so my goal is to have a video up on social media by the end of the week, and I hope to have a lot of community members stop by and say hello, and that pretty much finalizes my updates. The last thing is, Fire Chief Corolla and myself will be setting a couple of town hall meetings to discuss the, the CalFire maps and the impact that that will have, and that's coming up. I'll provide additional information at the upcoming meeting, so please follow the website and our social media. And with that, I will call Deborah to provide an update regarding the line of credit with the Veterans Memorial District. Thank you.
I'll give it to the council members. So, as you may or may not be aware, the Fillmore-Piru Veterans Memorial District was looking into rehabbing their VMD building, of which to become like what they call a resiliency, resiliency center. They did receive grant funding from the federal, federal housing and urban development, as well as the state development as well, to, with the mitigation resiliency infrastructure grant program. In addition, they also received funding for the community, community development block grant through the county of Ventura. Those dollars came to almost one, $2.1 million. In this time now, they are getting ready to do their Phase One, which is to be a ceiling and roof replacement. In April 12th, 2022, the city council actually approved a $1.2 million line of credit or loan agreement with VMD. So, what does this entail? The grant funding is not, is not provided in the, the start, is actually a reimbursable grant. So therefore, they have to do work, and then once the invoice is received, we then received in, the city, which we are doing on their behalf, will be providing the reimbursable information to both the county and the state to get reimbursement. The funding right now for VMD does not have that large scale to do so, and as the county, sorry, the city council decided to provide that $1.2 million as a cash flow loan. So, what will happen is, if any invoices come in, we will be paying it, and at that same time, we'll then be sending up for reimbursement to wait, usually, usually in grants, I'm not sure, in this particular case, for the state, could up, be up to two, three months. I know the city, sorry, the county has been a little more faster, because we are reusing them right now to pay for like project management, maybe architect design, and to that nature. So, we just wanted to ensure to let you know that this is a grant that one, sorry, funding, once that we receive it, it will be paying down this, so it's not, make sure it wasn't some confusion whether or not it was a contribution, it's actually a, like a cash flow loan, that we will be reimbursed once the reimbursement, once we submit it and receive payment for the grant. And we are ensuring that we are trying to follow all the prop, we are going to be following all the proper guidelines in order to receive the reimbursement. So, if you have any questions.
So, it's basically a line of...
Oops.
It's basically like a line of credit that, for the memorial district?
Yes.
Is there any exposure to the reimbursement regarding the, any federal funds?
As of right now, we did not hear, hear of anything. Of course, you know, we also have like some FEMA funding as well, so right now, we're, we were not seeing anything from the county, because the county is our, also helps us, is on, is where, and they've been very good at just kind of assisting with Fillmore-Piru District, sorry, Fillmore-Veterans-Piru District, to order for them to be able to get the funding as best as they can and follow them. And we're hoping for future, there'll be additional funding.
Okay. Thank you, Deborah, actually, a follow-up on the, on the future aspect. You mentioned Phase One being the memorial building roof repair. Is there a Phase Two, or a potential Phase Two?
There is potential Phase...
If there's more funding?
Phase Two, that, that would be more an additional funding, and that one, I can't, I can talk only so far, but just to actually know, there is more phases...
That's fine, there is a Phase Two.
Hoping phases to come.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you. You have any questions for Deborah?
No.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right. Okay, that leads us now to our closed session, and we actually do have quite a few items. Let me get them all here. Tiffany, I'm going to read them all?
Uh, I mean, I can do it if you want, but I have some...
Oh, okay, why don't you go, why don't you do that then? Thank you.
As the mayor said, the city council will meet in closed session on a number of items. The first four relate to existing litigation, including the matter, two matters involving Obrado versus the city of Fillmore, a matter Castro versus the city of Fillmore, and a matter Arroyo versus the city of Fillmore. Those are all pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. The city council also meet in closed session for existing litigation in the matter of city of Fillmore versus the Office of Tax Appeals, and on two, two matters of anticipated litigation, as well as real property negotiations relating to the northeast corner of Mountain View and Santa Clara Street, APN 053-0-083-230. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, the council will now move into closed session.
We are back from closed session. The council was updated on all of the items mentioned by our city attorney and there is no reportable action from council. I will adjourn our city council meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, April 8th here at City Hall. Have a good night. Thank you.